We're live on all our channels.
Thank you. Give everybody a second in case they want to share it. All right. Good evening, everyone. It's 6:01 PM and we're going to call to order the September 15th, 2020 meeting of the Gallatin City Council. We're going to begin, as we have been beginning all of these electronic meetings, with this vote that we have to take that allows us to hold the meeting virtually. So I'm going to read this and then I will entertain a motion. This says pursuant to Governor Lee's executive orders number 16, number 34, number 51, and number 60, and the need to limit the community spread of COVID-19, the September 15th, 2020 Gallatin City Council meeting will be held by electronic means. The meeting will be livestreamed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the council and the citizens of Gallatin. There are instructions on how to join the Zoom meeting on our website at gallantintn.gov, also on our Facebook page. If you cannot join virtually, you also have the option to call in. Those numbers where you may call in are 470-381-2552, 470-250-9358. And if you call either of those numbers, you will enter the webinar ID 891-6040-3046. This meeting is also live on Facebook at this time. It's streaming live on our website, and viewers may be viewing it on Cable Channel 19. With that, I'll entertain a motion. I will ask that the agenda stay on the screen for a minute in case anyone wants to get down those numbers or that link.
Most approve electronic meeting.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Overton and a second by Councilman Craig Hayes. With no discussion, I will ask Ms. Kettrell to call the roll for the vote on this, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor Seven Eyes Zero Nays.
Thank you so much, Ms. Kettrell. With that, we will proceed to the invocation appropriately, and Councilman Alexander will offer the.
Let every heart pray. Tell him, gracious God, once again, we come with Thanksgiving in our hearts. We thank you, dear Lord, for this beautiful day that that has created. We thank you for the city of Gallatin, especially the police force. We have peace in Gallatin. We don't have riots. We don't have any kind of tension. I just thank you, Lord, and I just pray that you would protect every police officer and their family as they strive every day to keep us all safe. Thank you, dear Lord, for all of our department heads, and thank you for our city officials, and I pray of God that everything we say and do in this meeting tonight will be pleasing to your side. In Jesus' name, I do pray, in every heart set. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Alexander. Ms. Kettrell, I know that you've already taken a roll called Vote, but we're going to officially call the roll at this time.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Present.
Councilman Alexander.
Present.
Councilman Fann.
Here.
Councilman Fennell.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Present.
Councilwoman Love.
Here.
And Councilman Overton.
Present.
Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you so much. Next, we have the approval of the minutes. These are from the August 18th, 2020 City Council meeting.
Most approve. Second.
I think I have a motion by Councilman Alexander and a second by Councilman Overton. Are there any corrections, additions? All right. With that, Ms. Kettrell, if you would call the roll for the vote again, please.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor Seven Eyes Zero Nays.
Thank you. Now it's time for public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting where anyone can speak to anything that is on the agenda. I will remind you, this is public comment. It's not a discussion period. If you do have questions, I'd be happy to direct you to the appropriate department to get those questions answered. But this is the public comment time. We ask that you introduce yourself. You give us your address. You will have five minutes to speak. I'll also remind you that there is a time at the end of the meeting where you can speak to anything that's not on the agenda. And also, on this evening's meeting is a public hearing, and this is a public hearing on the status report of our annexations from 2008 until 2020. So that is the public hearing on that, and that will also be on the agenda. So if you want to speak to that, that may be the appropriate time to do that. But with that, we will open public recognition on agenda-related items, and I will let Mr. Hinchell take charge, and he will give you instructions if you're calling in or if you are on the Zoom meeting on how to participate.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, if you're using your computer, please mouse over your screen, and you'll see some options open up at the bottom, and that's where you'll click the Raise Hand function. We'll call your name to get you started. If you're using a cellphone, then you would hit *9 to raise your hand, and then we'll give you a reminder, but *6 to unmute yourself. So be ready to raise your hand now. We'll start off with No More Growth. Go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Kristi Allen. I live at 104 Vineyards Court, and I wanted to speak to the development at Bloodsow Springs. And I've spoken at the last reading and the last public hearing, but I just wanted to get on here again and voice my concerns about the added traffic in this area. And as you know, this is a very busy intersection with heavy industrial traffic, emergency traffic every day. And now we have the added construction traffic for Facebook coming through there as well. And the last time I spoke, I reported some information that I obtained from the Gallatin Police Department regarding the number of accidents at that intersection. And at that time, they had given me 10 accidents that just the Gallatin Police Department had worked at that intersection in the last year. And I've also contacted the Sumner County Sheriff's Department, and I really wanted to get more of an idea of the number of accidents from that intersection down to the Berry Lane area, because that's going to be the area that's going to be the most impacted on Hartsfield Pike. And the Sheriff's Department is not able to just isolate that section of Hartsfield Pike. So what they gave me was from that intersection out to the county line, so out to Highway 231. And in the last 12 months, the Sheriff's Department has worked 78 accidents in that stretch of highway. And I went online also and with THP to see how many accidents they have worked. And they have worked six accidents on that same stretch as Sumner County. So I mean, that's close to 100 accidents in that stretch of highway in the last year. And so again, that just, you know, the numbers don't lie. You know, another development there, a high-density development in that area, that is a terrible location for a high-density development. And I've mentioned before, you know, when there's an accident just there at the intersection, it backs up traffic out to Castilian Springs, and there's no way around it. We are at a standstill. And so, you know, I just really want to ask all of you to consider the safety concerns about adding a development right there at that intersection. It's extremely dangerous. And I mean, honestly, every single morning when I leave for work, I wonder how in the world are the people from that development going to get on Highway 25 without backing up, you know, three and four and five-deep, waiting to get on the highway, you know, like I have to. And so, you know, I just really, you know, and begging really, each of you to consider, you know, what a high-density development is going to do to that intersection. And then also, I just, you know, we're in this pattern of growth where the city wants to annex some property. They want to change the current zoning, you know. We've done everything that we can do between Nashville and the city of Gallatin, and now we're wanting to stretch it on out, you know, east of the city. And, you know, every time that happens, you know, it's adding, it's traffic, it's adding, you know, impact on the school. You know, I know there have been questions raised about, you know, are we going to need an additional fire call, you know, and services, you know, because of this development? And I'm not sure if all of those questions have been answered. And, you know, all of those additional costs that get added, and, you know, it ultimately winds up, you know, passed on to the taxpayers. And, you know, at some point, it needs to stop. And I really feel like a year from now, we are going to be feeling the impacts that COVID has had, you know, on our businesses and shutting down, you know, tax revenue and sales tax revenue and all of those things. We are going to be hurting a year from now. And at that point, it's going to be too late to put the brakes on, you know, this type of development. So I just want to ask again, you know, please consider, you know, we don't have to move everything so quickly, you know, and just please, just, it just really feels like enough is enough. These developments just benefit the developers. I mean, they hurt the citizens, you know, that have been there for years repeatedly, repeatedly, over and over and over. The citizens are just, you know, wanting to be represented. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
And a quick reminder, we've got one more who's raised their hand. If you'd like to speak, please use the Raise Your Hand function. If you're the one caller that I don't recognize, you can hit *9 to raise your hand. Okay, now we'll go to Jevance's.
Hi, this is Michelle Jevance, 1335 Long Hollow Pike. I wanted to comment on three of the agenda items. The first one, I'm actually going to just comment on all of them now instead of during the public hearing for the Annexation Plan of Service Report. I think they're all kind of tied together. I want to remind you that the city's in default on the sewer line that was promised with the annexation of my property. And it's right there in your packets. It's not complete. It says it right there. And like I told you seven months ago at the last update, you can legally change the services promised and remove this, and that would simplify things. If you did that, our annexation would show as complete, and that would be smart to do because for the city, because in the future, at some point, if something along Long Hollow Pike here becomes developed, it would be a developer-funded sewer instead of a city-funded sewer, and that would be better for us financially. As it is right now, the city's in default on two of the plan of services from the annexations on the report that you have there tonight. And the second thing I wanted to speak about was the Meadows. You know, I'm opposed to that non-contiguous annexation. The city can't afford it right now, and we're adding land into the city that's so far out in the county, and we're going to need extra police service with this plan of service with it. Now, we're going to be taking care of more roads that the county used to be taking care of. That piece of land's not needed right now in the city. And besides, the city should not be annexing more land when it's in default on two prior annexation plan of services. And the same thing with the next item I wanted to speak about was Bloodsow Springs. Same thing. City doesn't need to annex more land right now. That development's going to cost us money. It needs more police, more fire services. That's going to add cost to the city long before we ever recoup that cost from the development. And right now, things are going too fast, and we're expanding our borders where we don't need to. I'm concerned that the city's overextending itself and can't afford what we're doing without borrowing more money. And I remember last week, the mayor was talking about a bond and, you know, asking you all to come tonight with your, or maybe the next week with your kind of wish list for this bond. And, you know, we don't need to be borrowing money, and that might have to increase taxes, and people can't afford that right now. We're in a pandemic economy. So I hope that you'll listen to what I'm saying. I think I'm speaking the truth, and I think I'm being very reasonable and practical. And thank you for your time. That was everything I wanted to say tonight.
Great. Thank you. There's no one else who wishes to speak?
Thank you. With no one else wishing to speak, we will declare public recognition on agenda-related items closed and move now to Mayor's comments. I do want to say a big thank you to the departments that had to come out over the weekend and some of the council members and other people that helped with the flooding that happened in the community. I know police and fire were out working. Certainly, our utility department was affected, and then Public Works was actually out there in the storm drains trying to get things cleaned out and our stormwater crew. So thank you all. Please pass on to your departments that their hard work is recognized this past weekend. That's not pleasant conditions to work in, and we're very grateful that we have such committed city staff that do that. I was also asked to mention this evening that Mr. Homer Bradley called, and it's been mentioned before, but I wanted to mention publicly that this year, Sumner County Sina cried for food, benefiting the Sumner County Food Bank is not going to be held. You likely know that Mr. Bradley is an older man that works really hard each year on this, and he's been very passionate about this ride and raising money for the Sumner County Food Bank. But he feels like that this year that we should skip a year, but not the fundraising. So if you would like to contribute to the Sumner County Food Bank, you can do so. It would be appreciated if you want to attribute it to Mr. Homer Bradley's fundraising efforts. I know that would mean a lot to him, too. So the Sumner County Food Bank, I should mention, and likely all the other food bank and charitable organizations in our community have been severely impacted by the pandemic. Not only have donations decreased, but demand has increased. So if that's not the one you feel led to support, find one and lend your time. Donate your goods or donate some money and help members of our community. That will conclude Mayor's comments this evening, and we will move now to the regular agenda. And we're going to begin the regular agenda with the public hearing, and this is the public hearing on the Plan of Services Progress Status Report, and Councilman Overton, I'm going to recognize to introduce this.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing on Plan of Services Progress Status Report, per Tennessee Code Annotated 6-51-108-C as of 9/15/2009, and this is a public hearing.
Yes, this is a public hearing. The report was presented last week, so now public comment is open on this item. If you'd like to participate in the public hearing, the comments are, as Mr. Hinchell described earlier, you may raise your hand either on the telephone or on the Zoom meeting, and you may speak to this. Public hearing is now open.
Okay, we have Jevance's. Go ahead.
Yeah, Pascal Jervant, 1335 Long Hollow Pike. Just a quick note, you know, I'm not from here, and English is not my first language, but I don't understand how the city can say they're not in default of the plan when I'm looking at the progress here, and there is two lines where it says not complete. For me, when you say not complete, I mean not complete. So I would like to have the input of the council on that. Thank you.
Okay, and we have No More Growth. Go ahead.
Hello, this is Kristi Allen, 104 Vineyards Court. And this topic keeps coming up, and I would just like some more information, you know, as the previous speaker. It appears that the city is in default because items have not been completed as they should. And, you know, I just wonder, how in the world is that allowed to happen? That we're, you know, continuing to annex properties when we're clearly in default? And it appears to be a black and white, you know, situation. I mean, I don't, there doesn't appear to be any gray area. So any clarification on that would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Okay. Don't see anyone else that's raised their hand on this issue.
Thank you. We will close the public hearing then on this Plan of Service Progress Status Report, and the public hearing I will declare closed. I will ask Mr. McCord, I know you did the presentation last week, but I don't like misinformation circulating. So would you please explain again why the city is not in default? Because I think you can do a better job than I can.
Yeah.
There you are.
Yeah. As I understand, that was based on annexations that occurred in 2008 along Long Hollow Pike. It was a short line of sewer line that was not constructed as identified in the plan of service. There was not a date or deadline, I don't believe, in the plan of service that required it to be constructed within a certain period of time. But as I think Mr. Gregory has mentioned before as well, that the property owners along that proposed or projected line extension have refused to provide an easement to the city that would allow for the installation of that line. The other annexation is along St. Blaise Road, and the sewer line is projected to be constructed through existing developed properties. The way the plan of service is written for that annexation is that those sewer lines would be installed when there's demand based on new development for that line. There hasn't been no new demand for development along that line. What you have are essentially estate lots along St. Blaise Road, and they are on septic system. So there's no new development proposed that would require an extension to that line to tie into the existing line on the north end of Kennesaw Farms Development. So once there is development that will need to extend that line, then that would trigger the implementation of development, and then the status of the plan of service would change.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McCord. I appreciate that explanation. Anybody on the council have any comments or questions before we move on to item two?
No, Mayor, I just really appreciate the explanation, because I mean, you get the rumors out there that we're not in compliance, and we are in compliance. And as Mr. Gregory said, if they want to give us that property, we'd be glad to put them in, but they're not going to give us that property. So I'm glad you had that explanation. I appreciate it.
Well, and I do want to be clear, we were technically in default about a year ago because we hadn't been doing the status reports. That's where we were technically in default. And so we are now in compliance, as far as I understand. But anyway, I did want to clear that up because I do not want people to think that we are ever, we do things by mistake certainly, but certainly never want to do anything wrong when we're aware that it could be something wrong. With that, I'm going to move on to item number two, which is Second Reading on Ordinance 02008-32, and Councilwoman Love is recognized for this item.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one. This is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin rezoning a 13.76 plus or minus acre parcel from the agricultural residential district to the R15 medium-density residential planned residential development district with a preliminary master development plan for Bella Vista, located south of East Broadway near Martin Lane, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. I so move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Love, a second by Councilman Alexander, opening the floor for discussion if there is any. Okay, seeing no one we should discuss, I'm going to ask Ms. Kettrell to call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor Seven Eyes Zero Nays.
Thank you so much. We're moving now on to resolutions, well, items three, four, and five. And I want to remind you all before we go forward that in this, there is a modified plan because when this was first presented, we didn't have the information from CSX to share with you the appropriate or the accurate plan. So if you so desire, on resolutions and on the second reading of the ordinance, we do need to amend that with the proper description of the property related to the CSX Railway. So we'll move forward now. Item number three is Resolution R2008-46, and Councilman Fann is recognized for that.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution of the city of Gallatin, Sumner County, Tennessee, adopting a plan of service for the annexation of 44.79 plus or minus acres. Partial tax map 112, partial 01, day 00, and an adjacent 2.51 plus or minor acre segment of the abandoned railroad railway located north of Hartsfield Pike and east of Airport Road and providing for an effective date. Open for discussion.
Most approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Overton, a second by Vice Mayor Camp, opening the floor for discussion. I do need to remind you that this needs to be amended with the appropriate description for the right-of-way for the railway. Am I saying that correctly, Mr. McCord?
Yes, ma'am. We have provided an alternate or the amended resolution in your agenda package, and that's the one we are asking you to substitute for the one that was presented on first reading or public hearing.
I'll make that in the form of an amendment.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Overton, second by Vice Mayor Camp. Any discussion on the amendment? I'm going to ask Ms. Kettrell to call the roll for the vote on the amendment first, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Just the amendment, yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Seven Eyes Zero Nays.
Okay, so we'll go back to the original motion for discussion before we vote.
I have told you all what I think of this several times by living this way, and Ms. Allen's discussion or remarks about traffic were right on. I've had people send me pictures of how they are trying to get out of their subdivisions or streets to get onto Hartsfield Pike in the mornings. I've had one person sent me a picture of a truck that had to go into the shoulder of the road because evidently, when you come over that hill right before this development, traffic is usually always backed up, and cars or trucks are going faster than they realize and don't know that there's a backup. So there's a lot of near misses that way. So I wouldn't mind this so much if it wasn't high-density. I think this is the wrong kind of development for that area. So I'm still against this.
I was driving yesterday out to Castilian Springs when the paving was going on, and it really made me realize how narrow that road is as far as trying to perform work. And they had a very difficult time getting two-way traffic happening on that road while they were just paving one lane. And I think we've all seen accidents happen on that road because there are so many places that you turn in and turn out of, and people don't realize people are stopping or turning. Or, and it's, I mean, it's the same issue that's on 31 if you get out in the county, too, frankly. But both places, it's like that.
I think personally, it's too dense for that area.
And I believe the planning commission originally said the same thing and lowered it by just a tiny amount. But I still believe it's just too dense. That high-density is not in character with that area, and the people don't want it. They're already worried about traffic and safety. So it's a no for me.
Who else would like to speak to this this evening? Okay, seeing no one, we're going to go ahead with the vote on Resolution R2008-46 as amended. I'm going to ask Ms. Ketchel to call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fann.
On three properties on Hartsfield Pike, so I feel like it's only proper for me to extend.
Councilman Fennell.
No.
Councilman Hayes.
No.
Councilwoman Love.
No.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, we have three yeses, three nos, and one abstention.
So guess what?
I get to vote.
First time I've ever seen this.
Oh, I've gotten to vote before. Hey, I appreciate the interest in the community and I appreciate these developers wanting to invest here. Certainly I do. But my concern with a development like this, and it's because we've let so many of them happen, is there, it's just, it's land that we don't have to accommodate within our city limits at this time. I think at some point it can be appropriate, but I think right now we're struggling to absorb so much that is within our community. Or not struggling, I shouldn't say that. I do feel like we have planned well and we are prepared for it, but I just feel like going outside of our city limits to bring in, bring inland, we would really like to focus redevelopment in our existing city limits is not a smart thing to do. And therefore I choose not to support it. So I'm going to vote no. Which means the motion would fail. Correct. Ms. Ketchel, do you need to record that a certain way?
I will be three yeses, four nos, and one abstention.
Thank you. With that failing, Ms. Haumacalli, do we proceed on to items four and five? Or?
Oh, reason to.
Well, it's on the agenda. We'll have to vote on it. Just have to vote it down or up, however you want to vote.
Well, you have voted not to adopt a Plan of Service for the annexation. So if you don't adopt the Plan of Services, you can't annex. And if you don't annex, then you can't rezone. But if you want to go ahead and take a roll call vote, just so that that's on the record. But you cannot have an annexation without a Plan of Services.
So there's no reason to do that then, right? Four and five?
Vote on it.
What, what'd you?
I think technically there's not a reason to vote on it, but if you want it on the record just to show that it fails, then you can proceed. But you cannot annex without a Plan of Services.
So what's the will of this body?
Let's don't vote on it.
I say I would suggest moving ahead as well. Is there anyone in disagreement with that? Okay, then we're going to move ahead to item number six, which is second reading on ordinance 02008-35. And Councilman Fennell is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating $92,017 federal grant to Police Department for Staffing and Allocation Studies project. I so move.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Fennell, a second by Councilman Alexander. I will remind anyone that may be observing this evening, this is from a grant and we just allocate the money to the appropriate department when such grants are received. Any discussion from anyone?
And it's a 100% grant.
Absolutely. We'll take it. Ms. Ketchel, would you like to call the roll for us, please?
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor Seven Eyes Zero Nays.
It does pass unanimously. Item number seven is second reading on ordinance 02009-36. Councilman Fann.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance appropriating $19,600 for the Tennessee Historical Commission Grant for Historic District Survey. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Fann, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance 02009-36. Ms. Ketchel could call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor Seven Eyes Zero Nays.
Thank you. Item number eight is second reading on ordinance 02009-37. Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is appropriating issuance recovery in the amount of $11,436.54 for repair to damaged dump truck. 9389. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilwoman Love. Any discussion? Second reading on the ordinance 02009-37. And Ms. Ketchel will call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor Seven Eyes Zero Nays.
Thank you. It passed unanimously. Item nine is second reading on ordinance 02009-38. Councilman Hayes.
It is an ordinance appropriating $18,538.87 from Miracle Park donations to Miracle Park Expense Fund. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilwoman Love. Ms. Ketchel, if you would call the roll for the vote on second reading on ordinance 02009-38.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor Seven Eyes Zero Nays.
Thank you. Item 10 is second reading on ordinance 02009-39. Vice Mayor Camp.
Thank you, Mayor. This is appropriating funds for the 2020, 2021 carrier over capital projects. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion from Vice Mayor Camp, a second from Councilman Alexander. And these are projects that were originally budgeted in last year's budget. They were not completed. They were carried over. To give you, I'm not going to go through all the details on that. It's a very, very, very long list, but if you're interested to see, you can certainly see it either in the meeting minutes or on the agenda for tonight's meeting. Any discussion for anyone? Okay, this is second reading on ordinance 02009-39. And Ms. Ketchel will call the roll for the vote?
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor Seven Eyes Zero Nays.
Thank you. Item 11 is first reading on ordinance 02009-40. Councilman Fennell.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. This is appropriating $127,769 from Project Woolhall for Engineering Department expenses. With that, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilman Alexander. Any questions, discussion? Seeing none, this is first reading on ordinance 02009-40. And Ms. Ketchel will call the roll for the vote.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor Seven Eyes Zero Nays.
Thank you. Ordinance 02009-40 is approved unanimously. Item 12 is first reading on ordinance 02009-41. And Councilman Hayes is recognized.
It is an ordinance to the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, rezoning portions of two lots and portions of two parcels totaling approximately 10.02 plus or minus acres of the Greensboro Village PUD, less right of way of Greensboro Drive and Greenlee Boulevard from the R6 High Density Residential to the MRO PUD Multiple Residential and Office Plan Unit Development District located east and west of Greensboro Drive, authorizing the revision to be indicated on official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances and providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Hayes, a second by Vice Mayor Camp, opening the floor for any discussion.
Yes, I got a question. Bill McCord. Bill McCord?
Yes, sir.
Hey, is this just a cleanup of what we're doing, I mean, for the rest of that area?
Yes, primarily it's the movie theater and other properties on either side of the movie theater which still have residential zoning even though they're part of the Greensboro PUD designated for commercial use. So the theater obviously is not a residential use and neither is the parking lot around the theater. So this takes that area west of the Knoll Development that's ongoing.
Yeah, even though, even though we're zoning it MRO, whatever, to comply with the rest of it, it still would have to come back to us before something was developed there, correct?
For, for preliminary master plan and a final plan, we'll go to the Planning Commission.
Would it come to us too?
I believe the preliminary master plans are still required on those properties that are still vacant.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we're going to take a vote on first reading on ordinance 02009-41. Ms. Ketchel, if you would call the roll for us, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor Seven Eyes Zero Nays.
Thank you. Ordinance 02009-41 is passed unanimously on first reading. Item 13 is first reading on ordinance 02009-42. And Vice Mayor Camp.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the City of Gallatin, Sumter County, Tennessee, approving preliminary master development plan for the Noble Park Town on two parcels, tax map 126L Group C, parcel 026.00 and 027.00, 2.65 plus or minus acres located north of Colesbury Road, west of Airport Road, authorizing visions to be indicated on official zoning letters, providing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and providing for effective date. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Camp, a second by Councilman Overton. Anyone wishing to discuss? Okay, seeing no one indicating that they wish to discuss further, this will be first reading on ordinance 02009-42. Ms. Ketchel, if you would call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell. Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor Seven Eyes Zero Nays.
Thank you. It does pass unanimously. Item 14 is first reading on ordinance 02009-43. Councilman Fennell.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance amended Gallatin Municipal Code, Chapter 5, Buildings and Building Regulations, Section 5-58, Amendments to International Building Code. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Fennell, a second by Councilman Alexander. Anyone wishing to discuss? All right, this is first reading on ordinance 02009-43. And Ms. Ketchel will call the roll for the vote.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor Seven Eyes Zero Nays.
Thank you. First reading on 02009-43 passes unanimously. Item 15 is Resolution R2009-52. And Vice Mayor Camp is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Resolution also to execute an interlocal agreement between Sumter County and the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, concerning the annexation of the metals property. So moved.
Have a motion by Vice Mayor Camp, a second by Councilman Fann. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, this is Resolution R2009-52. Ms. Ketchel, if you would call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell. Councilman Hayes.
No.
Councilwoman Love.
No.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor have four eyes and three nos.
Thank you. Resolution R2009-52 is approved in a vote of 4 to 3. That concludes the regular agenda and brings us now to other business. I do have two items this evening for you for your consideration, or actually ones more informational, others for your consideration. But I do have a road closure application here from Greater Gallatin for the Gallatin Annual Main Street Festival. In this instance, she does not get the signatures of all the merchants because they participate, the ones that are open on Saturdays participate in the Main Street Festival. But she did get the signatures from all of our required agencies. And so those signatures are here. It's described as road closure information from 6:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m. from Water Street, on, closing Water Street from Smith Street to Broadway, Main Street from Boyers to Locust Street, and Public Square from Water to Main Street. And I think you're all familiar with what the Main Street Festival is and would seek your endorsement slash approval of this.
Do we have the approval from our department head?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please. Oh, sorry, Ms. Ketchel has to call the roll for the vote.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton. Mayor Seven Eyes Zero Nays.
Thank you. That road closure is approved. The other item I have for you is regarding our virtual meetings. As you know, this council voted some time ago to continue virtual meetings through September. I'm going to ask that this council move forward and approve a virtual meeting for October 6. And the reason I'm requesting that is because that is when we're going to have the dangerous building hearings. And we certainly don't think that, well, one, we need to advertise it and we needed to communicate the information associated with that meeting.
Motion to approve.
All right, thank you. Motion by Councilman Alexander.
Second.
Second by Councilman Overton. Any discussion, feedback, thoughts?
Are we only deciding on October 6?
I think, I think at this point, the governor has allowed, I mean, it's the will of this body, honestly, but I need to make sure that October 6 is covered because of the information regarding the public hearings on the dangerous buildings. So it's up to you guys if you want to change that. I don't care. The governor has allowed them through the end of October.
Let's just go ahead and approve October 6 and then decide.
Okay, that's what we have a motion, a second on, so we will proceed with a vote. If Ms. Ketchel would call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Camp.
No.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, we have six eyes and one no.
All right, so that means that we may proceed with a virtual meeting at least until, with virtual meetings, well, at least October 6. With that, that's other business that I have for this council, but I would ask if any of you have any other business this evening?
Oh, ma'am. It's going to thank the department heads for their hard work during the flooding that we had done in the evening.
Second of that.
Thank you, Councilman Alexander and Ms. Love. I know they appreciate that. Anyone else with other business? All right, seeing no one, I'm going to move along to public recognition on non-agenda related items. All right, seeing no one, I'm going to move along to public recognition on non-agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting where you can speak if you have an item that is not on the agenda. We do ask that you raise your hand. You raise your hand virtually by hovering along the bottom of the screen, and the little hand signal comes up if you're on the phone. I believe you press star six. I'm actually communicating with Mr. Henshaw via telephone because his screen is locking up. But we're going to try and figure out how to do this in tandem to get our speakers able to speak. So, Mr. Henshaw, can you see or can you hear?
Mayor, he has asked me to take over.
Okay.
As moderator, so we do have Pascal has asked to speak. Hello, Pascal.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening again. I want to start by thanking Linda for comments tonight. That was refreshing. And Mayor, I know we don't always agree on things, but I think we all appreciate your call tonight. Now to come to something, I want to talk about signs. A few weeks ago, Councilman Fennell made a comment about sign usage. Who pushed me to look at what's going on and to get myself a little more educated than I was. This week I had a conversation with the attorney office. It was a great conversation. I want to thank you, Letitia. She had to take time out of her busy schedule to talk to me. And I think we talked probably around forty minutes on the phone. And even if we disagree on some stuff, like the sign size, where basically she told me it's up to interpretation. And one attorney is going to see something, another one is going to see something different, and she was right. I talked to a couple of attorneys, and one told me something, and another one told me something. So Letitia was right, so I'm not going to go to the size of the signs. But where I'm going to go is to the page two of the political campaign signage posted on the city website who talk about parked vehicle signs. Who say signs placed on or affixed to vehicle and not trailers that are parked on a right of way on public or private property so as to be visible from a public right of way. We actually agreed on that with Letitia that any sign on a trailer or on a vehicle should not be parked as to be visible from any right of way. After the first meeting where Sean made this comment, somebody came on Facebook with a post, we're going to call that person KC because I'm not supposed to say her name. And a post was really quickly removed out of Facebook when she realized that people were coming and telling her how wrong she was. And she was saying, I have to wonder if a candidate can follow a simple rule or mandate and will try to cheat on something as simple as a sign, how much integrity would they actually have while in office? So I'm asking question to this council is I'm driving all around the city, and I see Councilman Fennell sign on trailers, on back of pickup trucks. I probably have seen five, five like that, and people are sending me pictures too about that. So I'm wondering why a city councilman will do that. I talked to Bill McCord, too, and I thank him again for taking time to talk to me, who said that he would investigate. And if he was finding something was do wrong, he would send a letter, and that would take probably between seven and thirty days to get anything fixed. So in fact, you know, probably people who do enforcement don't have that to do all day long. So if that take a couple of weeks, I mean, this sign is going to be up for until the election. I have an issue with that. That's not fair. I know politics is not fair, but, you know, I'm still wondering why a city councilman would do that. But, you know, again, thanks to social media, there is a lot of record of things. And, you know, he posted picture of the last election where he already had sign on trailers. He had signs on back of pickup truck, and he had signs were bigger than sixteen square feet. Again, if I'm listening to Letitia, she told me that the thirty-two square feet sign got, her exact word was, I think she said, we decided to put that on the website after two thousand seventeen, when the state passed a freedom, freedom of information, so people.
Ms. Jevon, I'm going to interrupt you. Your time is up. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, next caller is Mr. Marchese. Can unmute yourself?
Yes, Frank Marchese, five eighty-nine Harris Lane. Speaking again tonight about the issues on Harris Lane and Long Hollow. I know Nick gave a brief summary of the report last week. I'm just wondering when a decision will be made on what is going to be done. I appreciated the report, but I also look forward to hearing when a decision will be made if something is going to be done at this intersection or not, as far as removing the parchop or some other kind of traffic control. Also, I did reach out to an official about the amount of traffic and the speed on this street. And I did get a response that wasn't exactly favorable. I just don't know who to turn to, Mayor, to solve the issues on this street. You said at the beginning of your meeting that you would point people in the right direction. I need direction. I've been asking for direction. I really would like some direction on what to do, who to speak to, to get something done here on this street. I did, another thing that I wanted to bring up is that I reported to Stormwater about the volume of mud that came out of the Liberty Creek Development over the weekend storms. Lance said that it was reported not only by me, but by the police, which I appreciate. And they were supposed to clean it up either yesterday or today, just to advise him that that is still not being completed. And that this part of Liberty Creek did overflow onto Harris Lane on Sunday also. You could, and that was, as far as I'm concerned, since I lived here, I haven't seen that. So that was unusual for that part of the creek to overflow. You could see the plants on the, on the other side of the street that were all pushed over by the flow of water. So those were three issues I wanted to just bring forth tonight. Thank you.
Hey, Mayor, there's no one else raising their hand to speak.
Mayor, I'd like to say something.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Fennell.
You know, we have a city ordinance, sign ordinance in place, and I understand that. And that's why I brought up during the meeting, because I seen the signs was going out in August. Well, that city ordinance is kind of, to me, is a house cleaning ordinance. And I was fine to abide by that. But when Mr. Jovance went out there and pulled out this Tennessee state law and said it trumps the city ordinance law, and he went ahead and done that, then I'll start looking around for the state law as far as size of the signage. There's nothing there. So then I'll look and see that Mr. Hagerty has got his signs out, which are the same size as mine, and nothing said about that. So I've got my signs out now. If I receive a letter from the city, I will move my big signs. I sure will. But if he wanted here to the city ordinance, what are we going to do?
Well, sign enforcement happens, as I described some time ago. It's up to the planning department, and they have a process where they address all sign issues. And one important thing everybody needs to know is that signs that are in the right of way will be picked up, and they can be recovered if so desired. But I know the sign rules are confusing. State law does have some thing. Because of state law, the city does have some things that we need to clean up. We try to put the appropriate information on the website, and we just hope that everyone can get along during this political season. It's the right thing to do. Mr. Marchese, I will mention, you actually know the right departments to speak to concerning your issues. I'm afraid that you're not going to be pleased with the time in which they can do what it is you think they should do. But they are very aware, and they continue to work, but keep contacting engineering. And they have a lot going on right now, but they are also working on your issue, and so we appreciate that. So with that, anyone else under, oh, we're very close public hearing, I'm sorry. All right, with that, I just made a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Overton, second by Councilwoman Love. All in favor, say a. Hey, everybody, have a lovely evening. Thank you for joining us. We'll see you next time. Bye.
Thank you. Bye, everybody.